The February 12th regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the D S this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city's attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in silent mode or turned off. For items that are not public hearings, I will provide an opportunity for public comment. Brent, the roll call, please.
Mr. Edmonds.
Here.
Mr. Hudson. Mr. Kempin.
Here.
Mr. Crent.
Here.
Mr. Sanzika.
Here.
Mr. Shepkey.
Here.
Mr. Schultz.
Here.
Mr. Stratt.
Here.
Mr. Tagle.
Here.
All right. Everyone has seen the agenda, and I'd like to motion.
Move to approve the agenda as prepared.
Mr. Sanzika.
Support.
Mr. Kempin.
Yes.
Mr. Crent.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Shepkey.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Stratt.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
You all received the minutes of our January 22nd special study meeting. Are there any comments or amendments to the meeting? Otherwise, I entertain a motion. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve as published.
Thank you. Second. Mr. Shepkey, second.
Mr. Kempin.
Yes.
Mr. Crent.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Shepkey, excuse me. Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Stratt.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
All right. Item number four, public comments for items not on the current agenda. Is there anyone who would like to say anything for items that are not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we will get into our agenda then. Item five, the conditional rezoning application file number CR 008, proposed Tim Horton's Cafe, northwest corner of Square Lake and Dequender, Section 1, from the N N neighborhood node N to CB Community Business District. We received a correspondence from the petitioner that has asked us to postpone this particular item. They are in the process of acquiring additional property. So, we're going to postpone this item for tonight. Is there any comments that the commission would like to make?
Yes.
I'd like to make two comments.
Okay.
One, we've received a number of emails from residences in the area. I think we've got 17 since the last meeting. This, I've got a copy, hard copy here if anyone wants to look at them. All of the emails were included in their electronic packets. They're all on their computers. They've all got them. And two, because the petitioner at this time is proposing to acquire new property, we will re-notify. So, the same people that got notification that live within 300 feet of the property will receive mailed notification, and notice will also be put in the newspaper. So, you will have advanced notice of the next meeting that this will be considered. And if anyone has any questions, if you'd like me to email you site plans, any information, if I can be at all helpful and transparent, I will do so.
Thank you. Do we need a resolution to postpone? No. Ms. Lancaster, do we need a motion and a resolution to postpone this?
Under the circumstances, I don't think it's necessarily because it looks like the nature of their request is going to be changing.
Okay.
So, it's almost a new request.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
And just for information, I want all the residents here to have a comfort level. This is going to change, they're talking about acquisition of property and completing a traffic study. So, we're waiting on the petitioner. So, I don't know when this is going to be completed. End of this week, two weeks, a month? I don't know. But what I do know is we'll have the same notification requirements that we had before, and if you received notice before, you'll receive it again. And if you want to stay on top of this by calling me or emailing the planning department and asking when the next dates are, we'll be happy to let you know.
All right. Thank you, Brent. Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Schultz.
Just to make it clear, though, because of notice requirements, it will not be at our next meeting at the very earliest.
In two weeks, it will not be on the agenda in two weeks.
Correct.
All right. Ready to move on? All right. Item number six, it's a public hearing, special use and preliminary site plan review, file number SU 400, proposed Starbucks in Qdoba at the Oakland Mall Outlet, northwest corner of John R. and 14 Mile, Section 35. It's currently zoned GB General Business District. Who will be presenting? Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the Planning Commission. As the chairman alluded to, this is a proposed site plan in special use for a Starbucks in Qdobo. The applicant is proposing a 2,500 square foot Qdobo and a 1,900 square foot Starbucks with a drive-through. The site is located within the Oakland Mall, fronting on 14 Mile Road, located between the existing Chili's development as well as the Bank of America. It should be noted that the applicant does not propose a curb cut off 14 Mile and rather gains access from an internal drive from the Oakland Mall facility. In regards to the building location proposed by the applicant, the applicant's building does meet all of the GB zoning requirements in regard to setback in bulk. It should be noted that we did have some questions about the need for the second drive-through once they get, it's a single, it's a single lane drive-through, once they get to the window, and then pass the window, it enters into two lanes. However, the applicant has met with us before the meeting, showed us a site plan that now includes one lane drive-through going the entire way. So, I'll let the applicant present that tonight for the Planning Commission. This use requires 56 spaces. However, the applicant is only proposing 44. That's a deficiency of 12 spaces. Relief can be granted by the Planning Commission, provided that the applicants provide sufficient evidence that the parking is sufficient for the site. The applicant indicates that due to excess parking in the Oakland Mall outlet, or Oakland Mall, parking should be sufficient to accommodate the use. The only thing, while we do concur with that, that there is enough of excess parking in the area, the one thing we do want to note that is due to the location of the Chili's as well as the Bank of America, there is the potential that excess parking, people could park in those two locations and simply walk to the Starbucks as well as the Qdobo. While we can't require, we've asked the applicant to speak with the Chili's and Bank of America just to let them know what they're doing and come up with a game plan in case that ever becomes an issue. In regards to stacking, the number of stacking spaces is identified twice in the ordinance. Article 13 states 10 stacking spaces. Article 6 denotes nine. We do require 10 parking, 10 stacking spaces for a drive-through restaurant use. The applicant has shown nine. Again, they showed us a revised site plan before the meeting that shows 10, so I'll let the applicant present that as well. Access again will be internal from the Oakland Mall. We do not have any concerns over access. The last item for discussion is that there is no sidewalk along this block of 14 Mile. At a minimum, the applicant is required to put a sidewalk in their front portion that fronts on 14 Mile. We have asked applicant to consider extending that sidewalk to the bus stop that is in front of Chili's so that people that were waiting for the bus stop can use the sidewalk to enter Starbucks, et cetera, and wait, and wait for their bus. We can't require that extension, but we do ask the applicant to consider and welcome their comments on that tonight. Landscape calculations have been provided. The applicant is deficient by one parking, one parking lot tree, as well as photometrics have been submitted. There is a slight discrepancy in the photometrics provided and what's actually on the plan, so we just ask that they confirm the number of lights, resubmit a fixture, as well as reduce the lighting level above in the parking lot fixtures. Because this is special use, it requires site, drive-through requires special use standards. These talk about compatibility with adjacent uses, compatibility with master plan, traffic impact, et cetera. We find that if they are able to make some of these site plan changes, we note that they do meet those standards. So, in conclusion, we do recommend approval, provided that they meet some of the photometric as well as landscaping requirements that were noted in the site plan report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Carroll? Well, very good report, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Tagle.
How are you, Mr. Carter?
How are you this evening?
Good, thank you.
As you probably know, my name is Jim Butler. I'm with Professional Engineering. We are the civil engineering consultant for this project. With us this evening are representatives from Howard &amp; Dell, the architectural firm who designed the building, and members of the ownership group, representative of the ownership group, Urban Retail Properties. As Mr. Carlisle pointed out, this is an outlot building to the existing Oakland Mall, placed between Chili's and between the Bank of America site. We've gone through his letter in detail, and one of the items obviously was the stacking. And we did represent nine stacking spaces on our site plan application. We did discuss this internally yesterday, and with some assistance from Starbucks, we were able to come up with 10 parkings, 10 spaces for stacking. How we accomplished this is we eliminated the dual drive that parallels 14 Mile Road. So, essentially, the building will be pushed forward to accommodate that 10th parking space. If you'd like, I can pass this around. To the other items that were in the review, there is a bike pack. Item number two, there is a bike pack, a bike rack that is indicated on the site plan. It is at the northeast corner of the building. The sidewalk section along 14 Mile Road, we have no objection in doing that. Making the connection to that, we have no objection in doing that. Adding the additional tree, again, no objection. We did, for point of clarification, we did try to use one existing tree for a parking lot tree, but we can certainly add a landscape tree, probably most desirable in that center island, since there is no landscaping within that island. The parking lot lights, I do have representative from Howard &amp; Dell, if you'd like to talk about that particular subject, but we certainly can provide the shielding, the number of lights, and reduce the level back to, down to what your requirements are. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr.?
Oh, I do have one other thing, if I may. There was a note in Mr. Carlisle's letter related to conversations between the adjacent property owners. I was informed by the mall manager that the conversations have begun, to talk to him about that what is going to be proposed here, and talking about the sharing of parking if necessary. So, they are essentially on notice.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Butler? Very unusual tonight.
Saving your energy, I think.
I have one for you, Jim. These two adjacent parcels, they are not part of the property owned by the mall? Is that a correct statement?
They are individual parcels. They're taxed, they're separate tax parcels.
Okay. All right.
They're owned.
My name is Chaz Miller. I'm the operations and construction manager. Those parcels are part of the Oakland Mall ownership group.
But they are just separate part, tax identification parcels.
All right.
Yes. But I don't want to differentiate between the ownership and different tax parcels. Same ownership group owns.
Same ownership, okay. Have you been involved with the initial conversations with the bank and with Chili's?
No, I have not. My regional vice president of real estate has been doing that, because we're already in negotiations with Chili's for an extension of their lease, and with the bank as well on just that footing.
Okay. All right. Yes, Mr. Edmonds. One of the proposed conditions for approval was that, that, that a sidewalk along the section of 14 Mile Road, and I'm assuming that's not a problem?
Yeah, we're willing to put that section along our frontage, absolutely.
How about the next one, number four, consider extending the sidewalk to the bus stop?
At this time, they're not interested in doing that, making that extension.
And how about the next one, by the sidewalk and crosswalk to connect the 14 Mile sidewalk to the pedestrian ramp?
That's no problem. That's not a problem. That's logical, since there is a ramp that's there, that's a logical connection to make.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Stratt.
Thank you, Chairman. Type E fixture is what I have concern with, which is non-shielded. That's the one thing that, want to make sure that you don't use that fixture.
This is Jim Jewett with Howard &amp; Dell Associates.
Good evening. The type E fixture you're referring to, is that the Ballard? Or is that the?
Oh, roadway series 320.
Oh, the roadway series. Yes, the initial thought was that we would use fixtures that matched the existing parking lot, but we're going to change that to a fully shielded fixture.
Okay.
And just to clarify, there was only one new fixture. The photometric showed nine fixtures, but that's because the photometric indicated a much larger area, and they were counting all the fixtures in that area, whether they were existing or new. So, we're just adding one, and that goes in the back of the north parking lot.
That was my next question.
Yep.
Appreciate your answering that.
And we'll determine whether that is sufficient once we go with the fully shielded. So, we'll update that.
Mr. Carroll.
Just a point of clarification. How many existing parking lot lights are in the site?
I don't know how many. Well, in our particular site, there are two that are existing.
Are you going to keep those, or are you going to replace them with the new fixtures as well?
We're replacing, we're removing one of the fixtures, because that's where the building sits, and then we're going to add a fixture in the new parking area.
Okay.
Mr. Stratt.
I'm not sure I remembered correctly. There are fixtures that are on your site.
There are current, yes, this is currently a parking lot, and there are two fixtures on the site.
And are they roadway type?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, they're existing roadway types.
I was hoping that they would be replaced.
That is our intent, and we will replace those.
Oh, you are going to replace?
Yes.
Okay.
Initially, we were looking at keeping those, but we understand now about the shielded, so we will replace those.
Okay. All right.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back for discussion? No discussion, sound like to make a motion? Mr. Schultz.
I'll discuss.
Okay.
I don't know about any of the rest of my commissioners, but I have a little bit of a case of chafes about putting forward a motion when the site plan is on an unlabeled eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper. I would prefer to see something in a package that has pages and stuff on it that we're going to approve.
Let me just clarify, did you receive something from the petitioner more than what was just passed around?
No.
I don't think Brent's even seen this, to be honest.
I haven't seen it yet.
So.
Although it was a misunderstanding on my part, I thought that the package had been updated.
Thanks.
And I'm ready for a resolution. I'm not sure the petitioner's going to like it, but I'm ready for a resolution. Resolve that we postpone this item until our next meeting, so that the petitioner can put together a corrected package, both site plan and lighting fixtures.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Or, actually, it should have read, "or such time as they can provide that information." Not necessar, if they can't do it by the next meeting, that's fine.
Will you second? Stay with your second, Mr. Stratt?
Yep.
Are you waiting for my roll call vote?
I am.
It's times like this where I really, really miss Kathy, because my chicken scratch writing is not very fast. On the motion, Mr. Crent.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Shepkey.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Stratt.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Kempin.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. The next item is a preliminary site plan review, file number SP 979, proposed gallery of Troy, north side of Big Beaver, between Wilshire and I-75, Section 21, currently zoned BB Big Beaver District. Mr. Carroll.
Yes, thank you. This is the second time the item has to come before the Planning Commission, however, the first time is part of a full site plan review. Our report was rather detailed, so I won't go into much of the specifics in more lead time for discussion and questions. Just, but as a little background, the applicant is proposing to develop this site in two phases. The first phase is a three-building pad outlot development along Big Beaver, and the back end of the site is a future hotel, which is not part of this current submittal. Since the last planning commission review, the applicant has revised the elevations based on some of the direction from the planning commission, as well as provide a plaza and streetscape along Big Beaver. In particular regards to the site plan, the building location, we note two issues for discussion. The first is that the retail building in the center is setback at 35 feet. The planning commission only has the discretion to approve a building setback at 30 feet, so the applicant has to move that building up to at least 30 feet to be approval by the planning commission. In second regard to the site plan issue is the location of parking along Wilshire. A requirement of the Big Beaver ordinance is that parking can't be located in the front yard, because it's a corner lot, it has two front yards. So, the applicant is going to be required to move that parking back. In addition, the ordinance does not allow for 100, a length of 100 feet maximum of parking, so the applicant should confirm that that parking along Wilshire is at least 100 feet or less in length. As our memo went into detail, most of our concerns were in regards to the design and architecture. Specifically, we had some concerns regarding the design consistency as well as some of the architecture quality proposed. The applicant has submitted some revised elevations and perspectives for discussion tonight. I will let them get into detail specifically about what they're proposing, and let the planning commission impart any questions in regards to that. The other issue we had, it's concern was the location of the trash enclosures. They are highly visible, and since these are essentially three or four-sided buildings, we feel that a more, I guess for lack of a better term, elegant way to screen the trash enclosures or enclose them, the building should be considered by the applicant. We do have some minor issues in regards to some of the landscaping requirements as well as some of the lighting requirements, but again, those are specifics that I don't think we need to get into at this time. So, like I said, we do support the proposed concept and feel it's moving in the right direction. We do just have some concerns around design and architecture consistency, and are looking for the planning commission to give further direction to the applicant moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Carroll? Mr. Sanzika.
Yeah, I was curious about the 35-foot requirement, or that the building had to be 30 feet. Is that?
Yeah.
Maybe you could explain that a little more, please.
One of the, in the form, in the, in the form-based districts, buildings are required to be set to a building line. That building line is 0 feet. However, the planning commission has the discretion, 10 feet, I'm sorry. The planning commission has the discretion to place that building or allow that building to be setback an additional 20 feet for 30 feet maximum, provide that within that 20 feet, there is some sort of pedestrian, public realm, cafe-type outdoor seating space. The allowance for that 30 feet, really, there has to be some sort of rational relationship between the amount of setback and the amount of public realm quality that the applicant is giving us. Based on what the applicant is submitting, which is consistent with the recently approved Big Beaver PUD, they are providing a significant public space and public realm in that location, including planter spaces, decorative paving, as well as public art. So, we don't have concerns in regards to granting the 30 feet, but that 30 feet is the maximum under which the planning commission can grant. So, the applicant is proposing something by setting at 35 feet, proposing something that can't be granted by the planning commission.
Did you have a question?
I, I'm looking at drawings, and I have to apologize, because I did not get tonight's agenda via email, so I'm a newbie at this. Looking at the building we're talking about, the center building, the, let me get my directions right. The east building is proposed to have an elevated outdoor dining area. If that projects five feet out from the building, does that count as part of the structure?
Are you speaking about the retail?
Yes.
That's a, it's an interesting point that was brought up, and we actually had debate going back and forth, whether or not that counts as a building. Based on the definition, it does not count, because the Big Beaver corridor, or Big Beaver form-based district actually talks about the facade has to be located at 30 feet, and this is not considered a facade. So, hence the building facade has to move up to 30 feet.
I'd hate to lose that balcony area, because we have to move the building up five feet. That's my only problem.
Well, we can raise that with the applicant. The applicant can address whether or not they have to lose that if they do move the building up.
Mr. Stratt.
I think that this is one of the best sites I've, or best designs that I've seen of a retail center. And I really think that, I think maybe our ordinance is wrong, and maybe we should consider revamping our ordinance. As far as I'm concerned, this is an excellent, excellent design. And I really like the annulation, the way that it's recessed and projected forward and back. I think it creates a, and yet, at the same time, the architect was able to actually harmonize the three structures, but yet, they have their individual taste. I think that it would be a shame to force them to do anything other than what they're presenting right now. So, that's my opinion. And I think maybe we should look at and relook at what we're talking about, our zoning ordinance being. This is an excellent design, as far as I'm concerned. I'd be very proud to be a part of that if I were the architect as well.
Yes, Mr. Crent.
I just want a little clarification. Mr. Carroll, if you can help me out on this. The, as regards to the Troy Center Drive parking setback at least 30 feet, and reduce the parking along Troy Center Drive, I can understand moving it back and reducing it to make it more visually pleasing as you're going into this complex. What does it say again, I'm sorry, about the, I didn't quite catch all of it, our ordinance or our Big Beaver requirements?
In regards to parking?
Yeah.
Parking cannot be located in the front, front yard essentially.
Right.
The front yard extends, and our definition extends from the, from the front of the building to the front property line. So, if you extend this bonefish out going parallel, some of the parking is located in front of that.
Okay.
So, you need to move that back.
Just a few spots, I see.
Yes.
Okay. And the setback, the, for the parking, says in my notes here, the remaining parking on Troy Center Drive setback, parking at least 30 feet back? It isn't 30 feet, I take it at this point. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, question?
Yes. So, Kempin.
I agree that this is a well-put-together plan, and visually, it's very appealing, and I think this is the sort of development we would be looking for. But the whole, the five-feet thing, is that something that would, that could go to appeals?
It would be, it would be, they would have to go to the zoning board of appeals, and it could go with a recommendation from the planning commission, but it would require a visit to the zoning board of appeals.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Stratt.
What if they were to attach the three buildings together? What if they were to attach the three buildings together through any kind of a beam or any kind of, and be considered as one structure? I would hate to lose what they've got here. I mean, they've got a very pleasant condition here that I see is very, very attractive.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Stratt.
I'd really like to hear from the applicant. If they, if they, five foot is a hardship.
Well, when they come up, we can ask them that. I just want to make sure that we've got any questions for Mr. Carlyle. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Schultz.
I have a question. I don't know if it's for Mr. Carlyle, or for Mr. Savinat, or for one of the erudite members of the Planning Commission. Could somebody define for me what the facade of a building is? I thought it was just the front point, but...
There's no definition in our ordinance. Mr. Carlyle looked it up in the dictionary. I forget what the meaning is. Mr. Carlyle, do you remember?
I don't remember without my head, no.
We, Mr. Schultz, I can assure you, we talked about this at length this week, Monday, for about an hour. The, the confusion is, the provisions refer to building line. It defines, the ordinance defines a building as any structure with a roof that shelters humans, animals, or materials of any kind, permanently or temporarily. So we would agree that the building would include the principal building, as well as the extensions thereof. However, when you go, when you look at the placement provisions for the, for the required building line, it speaks to the facade, and my recollection is the definition of facade clearly, clearly defined the principal building. That's where we kind of had to hang up.
Okay.
No, but.
Mr. Edmonds?
Well, it certainly is a, a note to all of us that we, I think we definitely need a definition of facade, and how that, how that relates to the building line in our next issue of the zoning ordinance. I agree with the other commissioners so far. I think this is a really, and I know we've talked about even in the Form Based codes that, you know, you do have articulation, where you have doors, you know, entry doors that are placed back, and that type of thing. So I, I think this is very congruent with that type of, at least, an intent.
Can I, can I speak to this for, very briefly?
Absolutely.
We, we talked about the, the intent of the, of this code, and, and the intent of, of the provisions, and, and our, our belief was that the intent was to have the principal building 30 feet from, from the right-of-way. Now, we also talked about, if we were to interpret it as I'm hearing, at least one Planning Commissioner kind of suggests, we could run the risk of having that principal building set back, oh, I don't know, 100 feet back from the right-of-way with a, with a 70-foot canopy extending from the front of the building, 70 feet towards Big Beaver, and, and meeting the 30-foot requirement by the extension of a 70-foot-long canopy. And while that probably isn't reasonable that it would happen, because there's no part, there would be no parking permitted in front, in front, you're just gonna, you're gonna eat up potential parking in the rear. Nonetheless, it, it, it could happen, and it would seem, it seemed to us that that was not within the spirit of what, what we're trying to get with the Big Beaver, with these provisions. So that's kind of where we were coming from, was, was not only, was, was setting precedent moving forward and unintended consequences of kind of making that interpretation. But, but I do hear what you're saying. We struggled with this. I mean, we, we talked about this at length.
And it really, it, a lot of it got down to intent. The intent of the Big Beaver Form Based district is to get buildings close to Big Beaver. And we struggled with the issue, is this part of the building? It doesn't provide the mass necessarily, or the street wall that we're trying to get along Big Beaver, and, and we feel like the ordinance states facade, and this is not part of the facade.
If, if you, if you, if this is constructed as, as designed here, and you were on the site, there's probably, you'd have to stand in only a handful of places to even recognize that there's offset. I mean, it, it's, but regardless, that, that's, and, and I would say that with the details, I'm not an architect, but in my simplistic brain, you know, the, the relationship of the balcony feature, and the outdoor seating, and, and extending the building, it, it does help provide massing and draw the whole, the whole building closer to Big Beaver, I will agree. And it's interesting, and it's dynamic, and it's exciting and all that. Our, our struggle was with the provisions and the word facade.
Just a small clarification. We're, we're not suggesting that they remove this balcony. We're just simply suggesting that they, they have to move this building up five feet. Now, that being said, if we want offset, we could also encourage them to push up the caravans and bonefish. The 30-foot setback, again, is a discretionary approval by the Planning Commission. If the Planning Commission doesn't feel that the 30 feet, they want it at 27 feet, 25 feet, et cetera, they can, they can require that. The 30 feet is totally, is purely discretionary based on the Planning Commission.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Stratt?
In answer to the questions that were just, or the points that were just brought up, we also are very concerned that we have some sort of a public identity, and something that is actually contributing to the public. And I do feel that the sculpture that they are showing in the front there is going to be jeopardized in terms of the additional five feet that'd be cut off. I like the idea of the way that they have that centerpiece there as an amenity for the passerby and for the rest of the public that drives by all of Troy from that point of view. But at any rate, that's the thing, that I, I really like what was designed, and I'm very, very aware of the fact of what the intent of the Form Based code, but I, I have, I've always had problems with that. But that's my personal opinion. I, I like the benches, I like, when, when the petitioner comes up, I'd like to ask a few questions in regards to that as well.
Mr. Carlyle, I just, I'm sorry, Mr. Edmonds, go ahead.
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but you know, I, I think this is, I think it's a little unfair to require an applicant who probably doesn't have to go to the ZBA to go, to, you know, to file a separate application, pay the fee. I think that's, when we very likely do not think it's necessary.
Well, that's what I wanted to clarify. I mean, they do not have an option at this point. They either move it up, or they go to the ZBA. Is that correct, Mr. Kyle or Mr. Savinat?
Based on staff's interpretation of the provisions.
Question. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Schultz?
I'm going to go a step further. Has the city attorney's office been involved in this to decide whether the covered area that, under the patio, counts as building space so that the building, in fact, is less than 30 feet from the right-of-way?
We did not seek input from the city attorney's office on this matter.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Frankestre.
Just, just to let you know, following the discussion, I, I can see planning department's dilemma because of the explanation that Mr. Savinat gave regarding clarifying how long this type of structure could be. And I'd also like to remind the board that a ZBA application for a variance can only be granted if there's a practical difficulty or hardship. BZA can, however, if somebody disagrees with the interpretation of an ordinance, can interpret an ordinance if that's the request. So I'm not sure a variance is the way to go on this, because I'm not sure what practical difficulties you could show with this, and you're putting that board in a position, or the, the ZBA, or the petitioner in a position where it's going to be a struggle. So just looking at this legally, you either can change the ordinance and take the opportunity to define what you're talking about. And normally, we, I guess I would ask, Brent, we do have a zoning ordinance coming forward. I don't know when that's going on to council, but, and we hate to do things by bandage, but if this is something, and if it's within the petitioner's guideline, timeline, you might want to consider that they look at that and to get some language in the zoning code that would take care of the problem that Mr. Carlyle and Mr. Savinat foresee. And when this goes to council, the amendments that you've been working on, the twinking, the typos, and the other things, maybe we could adopt something at that point.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Savinat?
I don't disagree with Mr. Schultz, Mr. Stratt, and other members who, regarding the placement of that building. I think, quite frankly, I, I think, I think it's a great design. I wonder out loud, though, right now it's placed 35 feet back with the balcony. What if it was 40 feet back? What if it was 50 feet back? What if it was 70 feet back? At what point, at what point does a provision apply? And not, it, the, the intent was, in my, my recollection, my involvement, and correct me if I'm wrong, Planning Commission, the intent was, the building's 10 feet back, the Planning Commission can allow it flexibility, for the principal building to be 30 foot back, and that's it. Again, unintended consequences of, of making this interpretation with the building 35 feet back. At what point is it too much? 40, 50, 100? I don't know, but we, but we've opened the door up if we do that. That's my, that's my concern.
Well, let me just add a thought on this. You know, I, I think, I think the issue that we're talking about, because you raised a good point, if, if we don't say this is it, what is it? But I think this is a design problem. I don't think this is a, an ordinance issue. Quite honestly, I don't know that five foot would make a difference to the plaza, if the two bil, flanking buildings came up five feet, and, and the deepest set building was at 30 feet. That's my personal opinion. But again, that's where, I think it's a design issue. I don't think it's an ordinance issue. Mr. Crent?
I just wanted to comment. What was the determining factor on 30 feet as opposed to 40 or 35 when this was written? Does anybody have any input on that? I mean, what, what made us decide 30 was the golden number, not 35?
I think 30 allowed, allowed some, some usable, some dynamics, some, some flexibility for, for having some effective, usable human space, some plaza area, some space that could be used by pedestrians, by, by users of the buildings, et cetera. And, and, but it wasn't pushing the building so far back that there was, still wasn't that relationship. That's the number we came up with, was 30 feet. It wasn't, we put a lot of thought into it. It may seem arbitrary, but it was, it was trying to get, kind of get the best of both worlds. Keep the, maintain, or establish a relationship with Big Beaver, with the front of the building, but also having some, some elements, some kind of human-scale elements between the front of the building and the road.
May I, may I just follow up on that, please?
Sure.
Talking about the human scale, we're putting, they're, they're proposing a nice sculptural element in front, and my, my thought is, I know we're responsible for public health, safety, and welfare, and I'm just thinking from the safety aspect, having that extra five foot, because we've got doors opening into that zone between the sculpture and the front of the building, people coming out. Is there any way to say, because of safety reasons, we agree this building can be back that far?
The zoning ordinance would not, would not allow administrative...
Safety thing on it, okay.
Well, it's, it's still, it's still a provision that, if your question is, does the ordinance allow the Planning Commission to administratively grant a waiver from a provision based on safety, the answer is no.
Thank you.
Mr. Schultz?
Well, I just had a simple question. If the sculptor were, were to be reduced by five foot in diameter, would that create the same effect by moving the building up five feet? And I, I don't know if that's an important element.
That's, the petitioner should answer that. I can give you my opinion, but it's only my opinion.
Well, that's what I was hoping to hear from them. This may be a moot point.
As soon as we're done with our dialogue, we'll get them up here. Mr. Schultz?
But our dialogue may not stop for a while. Mr. Savinat, question for you and/or Mr. Carlyle. This building, the center building, is basically six possible tenant spaces, the way I see it, five or six. If the westernmost tenant space were to be moved south five feet, would that make the rest of the building compliant if the facade of that portion of the building were five feet fur, closer to the right-of-way?
What's with the curveballs, Mr. Stratt, Mr. Schultz?
I'm trying to find a way to get this built. That's the curveball. As long as part of the building is five feet closer to the right-of-way, we should be all right, should we not?
There's a requirement that, now you're throwing a lot of curveballs. 75% of the building facade has to meet that line. So if you only moved up five feet, it wouldn't be the 75%.
Can we get the petitioner up here?
I give up.
Is the petitioner present? Would they like to come forward?
Give us a solution.
Well, thinking a little bit bigger here. I know what Mr. Carlyle said, about 75% of the facade. It's not one building. This is three buildings. If you think of it in the context of three buildings, I know you're trying to link them, Mr. Stratt, to make them, but in a broad-based thing, it's really three buildings that we're building. Aren't we meeting 75% of the requirement? Because we wanted to put that, when we were here last, we listened, obviously. We had great comments. We asked for input, you gave us input, and we obviously went and went back to the drawing board on that retail center. And it is truly an iconic building. It really will set that piece of property in motion. And wanting to put the right civic space, and the right-sized civic space. It's 18 feet in diameter. Could it go down? I mean, the, the, the center point of that civic space is 12 feet from the front door of that retail center. If we cut it down, it would be seven. Certainly, we could cut down the civic space a little bit if we, if we needed to, to meet the requirements, but we were trying to obviously create that area, that plaza. Five feet does mean a lot. We know what your ordinance says. We really, I, we understand it. I, I, I wish we could find a way to do this. At the end of the day, if it means moving it four feet forward to meet your ordinance, I guess that's where we're at. But again, if thinking in broader context, three buildings become one, we kind of do meet the ordinance requirement.
How long is that plaza?
How long?
Mm-hmm. Approximately.
Between the balconies?
From the face of the buildings.
Well, the building's 120 feet long from balcony to balcony.
So we're talking about a plaza that's 120 feet long, and in some zones, it's 30 feet wide, and in some zone, and in his, the middle zone, it's 35 feet wide.
You have the canopy that's projected out, which is the plaza, or over the plaza, which is not being considered, but where they have the overhang. So that cuts into the plaza itself, which creates a narrowness of that. But yet, it opens it up so that it does have that public sector, that sculpture.
Would the petitioner like to speak to the, how they could solve this design dilemma and not try to go through, you know, ordinance revisions and variances?
Absolutely. This...
Maybe, it's Scott Bowers from Bowers and Associates Architects. If I give you a little insight of what we tried to do from the beginning, maybe that we could work some of this through. Because what I heard was, when I came on board, that we had three different buildings that needed to be brought together in some sort of context. We needed to make more of an iconic building in the center, and give some sort of public space back to Big Beaver Corridor. And when we took a look at it, right away, Jim and I thought, well, maybe we can move this around a little bit to get enough in there to create something. And we were originally talking about fountains, and then fountains in Michigan are kind of plazé. And, you know, I, I've done a lot of recent travels over to, you know, from Ann Arbor to Grand Rapids and their public artworks, and it just dawned on me that why couldn't we do something that was by a local artist, sculptor, do something that had some mass and some, and some real character to it, instead of, and when we took a look at that, the 18 feet, and to get around it, and to bring people to the, the corridor, I mean, that was one of the biggest things, is to get people, so when you drive down, young, old, everybody says, hey, look, this thing's lively. There's people there, they're sitting out there, neat sculpture to look at, they can go to the retail, they can go to the bonefish or caravans, they can spend some time afterwards and mill around. We don't know all the tenants that are going to go in that space, but that's what we're counting on. And to shrink that down to just something, now we went from a statement to just trying to provide something for the ordinance. And it was our, our intent to provide something back to, to the community, rather than just to supply it with the ordinance. supply it with the ordinance. And that's why that grew, and we started changing the shape of our retail building. And actually, one of the ideas was to put a rooftop deck on there. Well, I didn't like the rooftop deck so much as I liked putting that balcony out, putting it to use, and bringing people where I could actually get them to very safely. Whether or not we have one or two stories, I pushed up that whole building to basically almost a two-story structure to give it that presence. Will it all be two-story? We don't know. But I did want to have access to one, or maybe even both, depending on the tenants, but for sure, the one that's shown as a patio right now. And we also took a look at the depth of that and whether or not, you know, is it a good seating arrangement? Because what, I just didn't want to have, and again, just supply the ordinance with, or, hey, we're putting one or two seats out in front of this building to comply with what everybody wants. I have a sitting area that, my sitting area's out in front of that building. That's really trying to bring everybody back out in safe distance, nice distance away from Big Beaver, but one that gave enough so that you had two or three rows of people, rather than just, you know, a couple tables. And that's how this all started to be generated. And I think what we did, and what we've been willing and working with everybody on, is our consistency, we do want to have consistency in the brick, we do want to have consistency in our colors. But our movement is where we're going to depart, and some of our awning colors are where we're going to start pulling apart to give it a little differentiation. But again, at the end of the day, that public art piece was probably the catalyst that started the whole design on the building, because we did want it to be something. How can I fix that? I don't know. Anything I do, I'm squishing it way down again. And when we did have our meeting with Mr. Carlisle, we did, and obviously, they've rethought this and looked at the ordinance, one of the reasons why we had those balconies was to pull the building out towards the street. That's why I made them so massive. They're not just a covering, they're actually physical structures. They have large columns with stone bases on them. They're definitely part of the building. And in truth be told, Boma standards would consider that as rentable space, because I'm supplying seating, coverage, and by that, my client could rent that space as outdoor space for extra seating.
I have a question.
Yes.
For Mr. Carlisle. I was reading this facade variation in your report, and it said that the building facade facing public streets and/or parks shall be 30 feet. If this space in front of the building were to be specially designated as park, Hart Park or whatever, something like that, could that be used in the interpretation of that?
I think...
The planning director's enjoying this evening. He's sitting over there with a grin on his face.
I think that becomes an ownership issue, and the true definition is a public park, and I don't think they're going to concede this as a public park. It is a quasi-public space, but still in their ownership and their control, and I don't think this is something the city would want to take on in terms of maintenance issues.
Mr. Stratt.
You know, several years, I think it was 10 years ago, when you came before us with PUD. And one of the key things that I felt was this corner or this segment, this is the most invaluable piece of property there, and the one thing that I wanted to make sure that we had that sculpture, we had something when people drive by, something that's lit up at night and can be really a real focal point. And you've accomplished that. I was reluctant at first to even consider this site, but at this point, I really think that, you know, it really makes a lot of sense. And that centerpiece is a very important element of the whole site. I totally agree with. And I really like the way that the seating is actually elevated, so people draw people. And when you see the people on the top there, it adds a third dimension. It adds some character to the whole site. I'm pleased with this, very pleased with this. I hate to see it bastardized in any way, but so be it. We've got some, I think, zoning ordinance that really should be looked at again. I hate to see this being modified. I really think that that sculpture is a very important asset to the community. But anyway, it may not be a perk.
Mr. Sanzicke, did you have anything for the petitioner? Yes, Mr. Edmonds.
When I saw the latest revision, I was really pleased, too, and I thought, boy, this is really crazy. Certainly a lot more than what we originally talked about in the original concept, and I applaud you for coming up with this. When I first saw it, before I even read anything, I thought, oh, my gosh, they're going to put work-live lofts on that second story? And I guess my question is, is the building going to be constructed so you could ever, at some time in the future, put a second story on any of these buildings?
We could do that. The practicality of it is that when we built on top of them, I'm sure that we'd have to vacate the lower floors just because of that issue.
That's, just in response, I think that's one of the things this commission is really, at some point in the future, whether it be you or someone else, we would like to see some work-live-type lofts space. I think that's one of the things we're still missing. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Schultz.
Just as a point of observation, Somerset Collection was able to put an entire second story on a mall without vacating a single store on the first floor, so...
Exactly, and it's a lot bigger. This is, you know, a fairly small retail spot, which I think would kind of hinder what's going on below comparatively, but I agree with you. It can be done.
Yes, Mr. Crin.
I've got something, but not for the petitioner.
Okay, all right. Any other comments for the questions for the petitioner? You know, I have a comment, and I want you to take this in the spirit that it's being said. I think this is a great-looking project. I think you've done a nice job here. But the 30-foot is a requirement like any other requirement that buildings have to be designed to. In this case, it's a zoning ordinance requirement. You design these buildings to meet building code requirements. So it's another requirement that has to be considered when you're designing these buildings. I didn't know if you were aware of the 30-foot or not. I mean, if you were, I don't know what the intent was, but if you weren't, I'm sorry.
We were. The reason that we considered that the awnings, actually not the awnings, those covered areas were part of the facade, this is a design that we brought into the planning department. We actually discussed that. It was obvious that later on, the definition of facade and what we were doing when they researched that changed.
So was it your understanding that the awning was the facade of the building?
The awning was part of the building, and we brought it out to meet that, and then we brought the center intentionally, because we knew about the 30. If you notice that on the plan, they all line up, intentionally to get more plaza area for the sculpture.
Yeah. You know, another observation I'll make, I'm looking at a plan on sheet A1, and again, I think it's a design issue. I understand what you're trying to accomplish, I think you can accomplish it, but we talk about 25 or 30 feet. Our eyes don't stop at 25 or 30 feet. The sidewalk is in addition to that, the right of way is in addition to that. So as far as the openness of this space, I don't think we're going to be sacrificing anything of openness. So I just, personally, I think it's a design issue that can address what the ordinance requires, so that we don't need to, or you don't need to go for variance.
Well, if it means getting approval, I can pull the building up to five feet. I'll just lose it in the balcony and a little bit around the area of the sculpture. I think I'd probably redesign the sculpture area a little bit, because if I lose that mashing again, it'd be like walking by a statue that's this tall instead of something of mass.
Yeah, but again, I respect what you're saying, but I don't think that that would be the case.
But we can easily just slide the building up five feet.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Edmonds, did you have another comment?
I don't want to see the building necessarily moved up five feet. That'd be fine, but I don't want to lose the width of those balconies overhead. I think that's part of...
How wide are the balconies? They're 16 feet. 16 feet. 16 of a usable feet.
Yeah, 22 total, 16.
11 feet.
So if you were to lose a portion of the five feet, so maybe they weren't 16 feet, maybe they were 14 feet.
All I would like, it really is to get comfortably at least two rows of seating, so I can get a mass of people, rather than a narrow strip of people up there. I mean, my whole idea about this is, and one of the things that Mr. Carlisle said, and that's what we took to heart, was that we're bringing people, and somebody said tonight, people get action. So I'm thinking of, you know, the younger crowd driving around and going, hey, you know what, there's a lot of people milling out over there, why don't we go?
Exactly.
And let's see, look at, why are they sitting up there? What's going on? And so that was the, my interest is to keep the depth as wide and get as many people up towards Big Beaver. I mean, I have some sitting on the side, but I, you know, that's a little more intimate, and no one would see it anyways. You know, you've got, you know, great sunlight from this facade, and you've got a lot of movement and a lot of, you know, traffic. And so, and the idea also was, because we have a two-sided building, we really want to draw people to the front side where there's no parking. And again, I'll go back to you, I wanted them to feel a little more comfortable than sitting right on Big Beaver, that they're a little deeper in. But we can easily, you know, work something out. If there's another way, maybe it's two and a half feet or three feet, we could do something like that. I mean, I don't want to trick out, you know, part of it, I feel like I'm tricking out the ordinance to make it work, which I can do, as long as we keep the essential design elements that we were trying to grasp at.
Mr. Sherman. Mr. Stratt.
How close are you with your projection to the road with the deck? How far? I can't tell.
How far from the right of way?
Yeah. Are you right up where you can't go any further closer, would you say?
Yeah, we're right on the line.
It looks like you're right up almost at the sidewalk edge or where landscaping is.
Yeah, we're right on the line.
You need 19 feet if you have two rows, right? Five and five is 10, plus nine, three, three and three? You're going to need about 19 feet in order to have two rows like you were talking about. So that five feet was real critical on that end, but seems like you're really paddling upstream.
I moved the building five feet up and...
Oh, I hate to see it. I really do. I really hate to see that happen, but again, I think we should look at our ordinance, so...
Let me ask the petitioner something. What's your timeframe? What's your time schedule?
We're to a point where we need to start making some traction.
So for us to be willing to look at the ordinance and make some amendments to the ordinance, that won't work with your time schedule?
No, probably will not, no.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Shetky.
I've been sitting back here just taking this all in, but it's a beautiful building, and I think what you're trying to accomplish, anytime you build something, we have to look at the finished product. And I would hate to see that balcony cut down. Right now, we're trying to create a walkable scenario in Troy. We're trying to show Troy off, and what you've done goes a long way in doing that. And I think that outdoor seating is very, very important, not only for the businesses involved, but for passersby. I think it really, it brings up what Troy's all about and really sets it off beautifully. So I would hate to see it, you know, I don't know, just a personal opinion, but I think that we have restrictions and rules to protect from unwanted development and that, but to me, this is something that really is, it would be a beautiful addition to our downtown area. And it's what we're overall trying to accomplish, we're trying to get more, we're trying to get more walkability in outside areas, so I really favor leaving it the way it is. I wish that there's some way that we can work around it, and I'll try anything that I can do to see that this goes through the way it is.
Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Savidant, you're going to want to listen, and you're going to be shaking your head again. If the area under the balcony were to be enclosed, like with, let's say, retractable glass walls that we have in several other facilities around the city, and this was built as all one structure, would that qualify for the amount of facade that needs to be less than 30 feet from the road?
You say this built all one structure, you mean the three structures were...
Yeah, we can put an underground wall between all three of them and hook them together, and it becomes one structure.
Nothing like being put on the spot on television. I'd have to ask for a few minutes to scratch my head and think about it, and probably consult with Mr. Carlisle and Ms. Lancaster.
Okay. I realize it's stretching it, but I'm trying to figure out a way to get this done. And if the lower, if the area under the balcony directly in front of the building were to be enclosed so that it could be used year-round and taken into a, with the Carrabba's and the Bonefish, I think we might be at 75% of the facade of the facility is less than 30 feet from the road. In fact, that building may not all have to be, well, it would have to be all one building, because that's part of the ordinance. Okay, just thinking out loud.
Yes, Mr. Edmonds.
Well, the other thing I'm a little concerned about is that we're going to lose perhaps the mass and the size of the public art. I think that's critical to this thing, and I kind of like Mr. Schultz's idea. I don't know how the petitioner...
Which one? Which idea?
The latest idea?
The latest.
Oh, the latest, Mr. Schultz's idea, about connecting, you know, with walls, glass walls, so it's a year-round structure.
I think with Jim's help, and if I change a little bit of the design of the canopy or the overhangs, balconies, I can still keep that critical mass that I wanted and pull the building up, because we're worried about the walking paths between the planners and things like that. So I could leave that alone, pull the balcony up, and just create a little bigger overhang on my balcony. And it looks, it appears that we have almost maybe three feet that I could push that centerpiece towards forward. So I would essentially be losing only two feet out of the centerpiece, which would only be the pavement around it, which I think I could live with. I really do want to keep the sculpture size where it's at. So we could probably get the five feet. I'm just going to have to modify all that.
Mr. Sherman.
I think we should give the petitioner an opportunity to take it, study it, and come back with a solution.
I agree. That's what I said forty minutes ago.
I'd hate to see you try to design it right here on the spot, unless you feel comfortable in doing that, but I...
It's just math. It looks like it works.
In two weeks, I'm sure you can come back, I think. I don't know, is that possible? Is there any other issues, then?
Well, I'd like to ask you a question about the dumpster locations and the dumpsters. We spoke last time, and I don't know if you were here at the last meeting, but we talked to these buildings.
No, but I've heard about it.
Yeah, well, we have three front sides to these buildings, in some cases, four. And the dumpster, unfortunately, is right out there. And I'm concerned, and I would expect the tenants would be concerned... would expect the tenants would be concerned, come July and August, when those dumpsters start to really start smelling well, and what they might look like, everybody that's coming to this, unless they're walking on Big Beaver, they're coming from the parking lot. So again, I'm concerned with the, with the solution that's been proposed thus far.
Well, the center building has its dumpster across the aisle in an island, because we couldn't find a real good way to, because we do have two fronts. Carrabas is towards the highway, and then Bonefish is on the inside, away from the other drive. And the reason why we wanted it away from the other drive, we see that as being a, you know, we've got our seating over there and more of a pedestrian path than in between the buildings. Even though we've taken great care, I don't know if you've taken a look at all the drawings, but we have facade treatments all the way down our little, our aisle is in between the buildings, it's feeders, and it'd be lit. We do feel that they'll use the street instead of in between the buildings.
You don't think they'll walk between the buildings?
No, I think they will, but we see it, we'd rather have it there than on the west side of the building for sure.
And Liz, do you want to talk anymore about the-
Hi, Liz Abernathy. Nice to see all of you again. And, you know, we, there's never a good place to put a dumpster, never a good place. And, you know, when we look at putting it remotely in the parking lot, it's just as difficult to screen it as when it's up against the building. We didn't want to move the Bonefish to the west because of the proximity to the patio, and we want to keep that Troy Center Drive more pedestrian-oriented and not have the dumpster on that side. So we kept it on the other corner of the building, and that seemed an easier way to screen it. And from an operations standpoint, there's a lot of reasons why we want the dumpster right up against the building. And I have one of our operations people with me here tonight.
I'm Michael Mondozy, I'm the regional manager for Michigan. We'll tell you the dumpsters, first off, the smell thing, it really doesn't, I really don't notice that. They're enclosed, we keep them covered. It's a very critical part of a health inspection every three months. If there ever is any, anything, it's taken care of right away. Another big problem that used to occur in the past was we always stored grease out there. Grease now is self-contained, we won't have any grease out there at all. That probably was the largest source of odors in the past. Next issue is safety, in just common sense. It's very difficult to haul that trash, and we need to close this point possible at that back door to the dumpster. It's heavy, chance of things spilling or tipping, the farther we go, increase, then we do have a mess. Safety-wise, I realize, you know, we have a, there's a great police department here, great safety record, but again, the longer employees are out, exposed, they are at risk. And a lot of times, these are at night, their last trash run, we're closed, could be an hour and a half after we closed.
I may be the only one that has this concern, but again, do you have any other stores that are configured like this, where your customers are going to walk right past your dumpster to get into your building?
Yes. Sterling Heights, no issue.
How long's the building been up?
Nine years.
I'd love, where's that located? I'd love to go see what that looks like, because I can't imagine that-
It's right on Shainer Road.
Shainer?
Shainer and-
Shanner Hall Road.
And Hall Road.
Right on Hall Road, yep.
Did you have a question, Mr. Edmonds?
No, I just was wondering, Mr. Savinat, I'm not, I can't see where the dumpsters are located. What page are we on on the packet? Could we put that up on the screen? Is it 119 or-
126 will give you a good picture of it.
133, this drawing is 133. This one?
No, but where the dumpsters are located?
L1.
He wants an elevation.
What page of the packet is that?
You want the site plan, Mr. Edmonds?
I just want the packet.
121.
121.
121, thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you. All right, gentlemen, is discussion?
Mr. Grant?
Just one question for staff. When we provide the setbacks for any building in Troy, if, let's say for a home, it has a porch with a covered front, is that considered, with that covered porch, is that considered the setback for that house?
Yes. That would be the front of the building.
Correct.
The building line.
So the front of this building, of those sections, could be considered the setback for those porches?
Well, we're talking about, the provisions refer to two different things. They refer to the building line in this, in any instance of the canopies or the balconies, where those, the southernmost extent of those would be the building line. However, there's, it also refers to the facade. And I think pretty clearly, the southernmost extent of the canopy or the balcony is not the facade of the building. The facade of the building is the front face of the principal, of the principal building. So there's a, there's two different provisions that apply, one the building line, the other the facade.
Okay, so it's not, so in a case, again, referring back to a house, if they had a covered porch, we would call that, that they couldn't come any closer. In other words, that's, that's what setback line is created, but it wouldn't apply in this case?
Well, in the case of a house, if the front yard setback was forty feet, that porch couldn't extend close beyond forty feet.
In this case, can we call the, I guess what I'm trying to find is, could these overhanging, really, their covered porches, could they be considered the line of the setback at the front of the porch?
They are, they are considered, they are the building line, however, they're not the facade.
So we're, but in a home, we don't have that facade requirement?
Correct. It's a build-to line, there's a maximum setback, and then there's a minimum setback and a maximum build-to line. It's different, different concepts. And what's confusing the issue in this instance is the, is that, and I, I believe, my pretty strong opinion, unless you can convince me otherwise, that the facade of that building is not the canopy, the balcony or the camp, whatever you want to call that feature.
I'm just saying, so that the facade requirement is, doesn't apply in the case of a home? We don't have that requirement then?
Well, I would say the, I'm not an architect, you're an architect sitting two away from you, you could ask for his opinion. My opinion, I mean, comparing, comparing a porch in a house, this is not, this is not the front porch of a home, this is, this is a balcony feature of a building. It's apples and oranges in my opinion, but I, you know-
Trying to make it fit.
Again, two architects sitting right over there.
The only thing I add to that is, Director Savinat's correct, this is different than a porch in a house. And using your house example, if you had a small overhang with two columns there, we would not consider that where those two columns extend as part of, in your setback. We would consider where your, the main facade of your building is your setback line. So using that equivalent, we really couldn't consider this, we wouldn't use that same application for this structure as well.
Just trying.
That's a, that's a great example. I mean, one's an architectural feature, one's an extension of the, like, it's a heated living space. It's, so it's different than this, than this example we've got for, for the Galleria, in my opinion.
Just, just to support what Brent's saying, even if we did take the balcony into account, it does not constitute seventy-five percent of the facade of the building. So it doesn't matter how hard we push this, we're not going to get three pounds in a two-pound bag.
Okay.
All right.
Just for those in the audience who are watching at home, or, you know, maybe even on the planning commission, at the end of the day, I think we all want the same thing, including, you know, we all want the same thing. And I think if you're to put a percentage on how close they are, it's, you know, ninety, whatever, eight, ninety-seven, ninety, whatever the percentage is, we all want the same thing. And I think there's a solution here that we're pretty darn close to achieving, in my opinion.
Thank you. Gentlemen, what's your, what's your flavor here? Postponement for two weeks?
Postpone for two weeks.
Or whenever they can get back.
Do we need to discuss the parking still?
We didn't have any questions. I don't know if the petitioner had any objection to the comments from the planning consultant.
Just a little clarification, if I may. So if you can put the site plan up, Mr. Savinat, probably cleaner, talk about it. Next one, next one. Overall, that's fine. That's probably the best. So the, anything along Troy Center Drive that's located within thirty feet is deemed within that green belt, required green belt.
Well, geez. Because I think this is something that Brent and I need to discuss in a little more detail, because it's a curved, it's a curved street there, would we consider that entire length of thirty feet, or do we consider just the portion, if you extend that building line straight, straight across, that, those few five row, you know, parking spaces, would those be considered in the front yard? Can Brent and I have a conversation offline, and we'll get back to you on that one?
Okay, because we do have, obviously, we want to meet the requirements, the ordinance, the users, albeit retail, and both Bonefish and Carrabas have specific numbers that they would like to see. We are willing to come back in two weeks, we can certainly make that happen. I think we would be in a similar circumstance on the previous project. If that's your pleasure, I guess we can certainly accommodate that. We really have no other option. We have to.
Thank you.
If you will entertain us on one of your study sessions.
Absolutely will. All right. Oh, Mr. Coe, I'm sorry.
I just want to say, I think the applicant has done a valid effort to kind of meet our concerns and issues, and I'd like them to get approved as quick as possible. So if there are any other point of clarifications the planning can give them so that they can provide a complete submission, so they can get approved at the next meeting, do you have any concerns of the architecture, the materials, et cetera, so they, so we can move this forward? We really only spoke to the location of the retail building and didn't get into some of the other, you know, specifics of the application, and I just want to make sure that we're moving in the right direction on this.
Mr. Stratt? Just have a concern as it relates to all the amenities that you're showing on your rendering. They are going to be put in, I'm talking about the benches, et cetera, as well as the sculpture.
Yes, we need to do a little bit more updating related to our plan to reflect what's in the perspective. You know, there are benches that he has along those planter boxes that are there that we did not show. There's bike rack that needs to be shown, and there is a light fixture. And I do have a light fixture, so there's similar to what we did at the Village of Big Beaver.
Okay.
So that'll be included.
Is that the light fixture for the entire development, or is that-
That's the stuff along the-
Is there any difference on the, in between the buildings as opposed to the parking?
Right now, the, that's for the periphery, as you go down the plaza along Big Beaver and as you head towards on Troy Center Drive.
Mr. Schultz, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to support your concern. I, I think there could be a better treatment for the dumpster behind Bonefish, even maybe like a rollaway door or something, so it doesn't look exactly like a dumpster enclosure with a, with a patio fence in front of it. But I agree, because I work in a facility that has dumpsters for many restaurants, and long about the middle of August, they become quite aromatic.
Jim, I had a question. On the exterior material, there's a product called pre-fast concrete panels. What is that? Is that a typo? Should it say pre-cast?
Pre-cast.
Pre-cast panels. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Do we need a motion?
I, I think the other thing that we all need to be aware of, that, you know, this, the northern phase of this, the second phase, is a hotel. And I know we're not discussing that at this point, but I think that's what we all need to keep in mind. This is going to be a go-to place, a placemaking type of thing for, for the city of Troy.
I got a question for the architect.
Go ahead, Mr. Stratt.
Thank you, sir. The sculpture, are you going to be controlling that, or are you going to have lights? What do you, what do you anticipate?
Well, we've got a lot of ideas, nothing set in stone yet, but what we wanted to do is see what the local market was for sculptures, or sculptors, and kind of get a little, some sort of competition or contest going to see what kind of things that they can develop as well. That's, that's what the idea was.
I'm assuming you're going to be lighting it up in the evening, and you're going to maybe do some colors maybe, or something of that nature?
Yeah, we're going to have control over that aspect of it.
You are going to control that?
Yes.
And also the benches and all the rest of the stuff?
Yeah, everything's going to be consistent, and the benches are going to be consistent.
Bike racks and all the rest of it? Those nice things?
Yeah, everything, everything along that whole corridor, we're going to do is consistent.
We're counting on you.
Yeah, I understood that, that's when we, I stepped in.
Good job, really.
It might help if Mr. Savinat would put them in contact with the Troy Image and Arts Council. They may really welcome an idea of a contest, so.
True.
Mr. Schultz, would you like to make a motion?
Remove to postpone this to our next study session, or such time as the petitioner can come back with revised plan.
Second.
Who got it?
Mr. Grant.
Mr. Sanzicca?
Yes.
Mr. Shepkey?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Teagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Thank you very much. It's a nice development.
Thank you.
All right. Item number eight is a public hearing. City initiated rezoning application file number Z742, proposed 1071 Villa Park, part of parcel identification number 88-20-02-301-010, east side of Rochester Road, south of South Boulevard, section two, from R1D, single, one-family residential to District Two, RT, one-family attached residential district. Mr. Savinat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This will be a relatively brief presentation. The, as you're all aware, we did a comprehensive rewrite of our zoning ordinance, and as part of that process, we eliminated and combined a number of different districts. One of the things we did was we combined some of our more intense single-family residential districts into one district called RT. We took, we took R2, we took CR1, and we combined them into RT. Now, this particular parcel that we're talking about this evening is Rochester Villas, and the area that you see outlined in red was supposed to be zoned RT, two-family attached dwelling units, and it was mistakenly, the classification was mistakenly changed to R1C, which is one-family detached. How did I find out about this? I got a request from a financial, financial institution to prepare a letter describing the zoning on the property, and I informed the bank that this was illegal non-conforming use and legal non-conforming buildings. And when it was approved, it conformed, and the, it was inadvertently rezoned. I don't know why, but it was, it was an error on our part, on the city's part. So we're correcting the error by rezoning the parcel back to RT. So the, the city is the applicant here, because we're the one who made the mistake, so we're fixing it. There's, we're the petitioner, and we're just trying to undo an error. So we were, the reason we recommend the rezoning is it will be, it will be consistent with the Troy Master Plan, which calls for this type of development in this area. It's consistent, consistent with the budding zoning districts and land uses. It will eliminate the non-conforming use- It will eliminate the non-conforming use status of the subject property, and it will correct an administrative error.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, Mr. Stratt.
Would the petitioner go to the podium, please?
There you go.
Would you please revise and come back in two weeks?
Boy, oh, boy.
You guys are rough.
Yeah. Tough crowd tonight.
Mr. Edmonds.
I think this is a no-brainer, so I would offer the resolution as follows.
Hang one second. This is a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this matter? All right, seen no one. Mr. Edmonds.
Resolved that the Planning Commission hereby recommends to the City Council that the R one D to RT rezoning request located on the east side of Rochester Road, south of South Boulevard, ten seventy-one Villa Park, in section two, being approximately thirty-four point one-six-nine acres in size, be approved for the following reasons. Number one, the rezoning is consistent with the city of Troy Master Plan. Number two, the rezoning is consistent with the abutting, abutting zoning districts and land uses. Number three, the rezoning will eliminate the non-conforming use status of the subject property. And number four, the rezoning will correct an administrative error.
Second.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Teagle?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Krant?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
All right, the next item, item nine. This is a zoning ordinance text amendment file number ZOTA, Z O T A, two forty-five, sober living facility. Is this, whose is this, Mr. Carroll?
I'm going to do this one. Thank you. This item was last considered by the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and the applicant came before the commission and asked for interpretation of what they're proposing to do and how it fits with the ordinance. Based on discussion with the, with the Planning Commission, it was felt that the ordinance didn't, didn't truly reflect this use or put in the necessary standards and requirements as, as associated. So at the direction of the Planning Commission, staff went back and researched this a little bit further, researched best practices, and then came up with some draft ordinance language to consider. We have sent the draft language to the applicant. They did respond to it, which was provided in your packet. We can go over that in detail. But in regards to best practices, surprisingly or not surprisingly, there wasn't a lot out there in regards to what other communities have done for this type of facility. The only, the closest we found was, was dealt with in both St. Paul, Minnesota, as well as Los Angeles. Obviously, much larger and different cities and scale as to what we're doing in Troy. In fact, the facility we did visit as a planning commission, the township wasn't aware that, Shelby Township was not aware that the facility even existed, which, which is, which is a good thing, because they, they also know that they haven't received any, any sort of complaints or issues from the neighborhood. So for what's that, for whatever that's worth. Specifically into the language, well, let me back up. For the best practice, there weren't a lot of great applications to Troy, but we did cherry pick some of their standards and bring them over into our standards, too, and so I'll go over that in a second. In regards to language we put together, we did change the use from sober living to recovery center. I just think it sounded a little bit softer and more friendly. And we did, we did put in a definition there, and the purpose of the definition was really to define this use from a halfway house or some other more governmental, institutional type of use. And we also wanted flexibility for the Planning Commission and staff to interpret similar uses, not specifically to the one that's being proposed as part of this development. So that is why we did distinguish the definition as we did, and we also didn't want, we wanted to ensure that this didn't include more intense, like I said, intense, more dependent intense facilities. One of the issues that we struggled with was the, the idea of what a threshold for regulation is. The zoning ordinance defines a family, the typical definition of family includes six members or less, and so we struggled with, should we regulate facilities that are less than six, six residents or not? Based on our, our review of similar like uses, which we don't regulate their six or less, based on the definition of family, which is, again, six members, typically six members or less, and based on case law and exclusionary zoning ADA requirements, we just felt like the best avenue for the city was to define this as seven persons or more and regulate it based on that. So if it's six members or less, it's considered a single-family use, and it goes into the single-family districts, and we are not going to regulate them. In regards to the use districts, we found that this was similar, like I said, to adult foster care, that way, that way we have lined up the permitted uses in the districts with those with adult foster care. There are special uses in the R one A through R one E, the RT, the MR, the UR, as well as the IB and the OM. These are special uses, again, for seven residents or more. We also did include some specific use standards. I'll read all these real quickly and a little bit of why we went with the avenue we went with. A site plan as prepared in accordance to Article Eight should be submitted. Frontage on either a major or minor arterial street shall be required. This, again, is a threshold question. This would not allow a facility on a local road, so we won't get necessarily in deep into the neighborhoods. This has to be more on a, an arterial road, similar to what is being proposed by the applicant. That's an arterial road, so it would meet that requirement. We're requiring one, one bed, one space per bed, as well as one off-street parking space per employee. The reason we are going back and forth with how much parking we should, we should require, we understand that many of the residents do not have a driver's license, or some of the residents don't have a driver's license or drive. However, knowing that they will have visitors, et cetera, we wanted to err on the side of caution and require one space per bed, or essentially per resident. Licenses with the state of Michigan shall be maintained. The fifth standard is that the parcels should be the minimum lot area of twenty-five hundred square feet per adult or per resident. This is another point of discussion. Convalescent centers require two thousand square feet per unit, and adult foster care is, I believe, is four thousand, so this is right in the, essentially right in the middle of those two. We felt this was an applicable number to, in turn, to limit the, the density that's allowed for these types of facilities. And lastly, we are allowing, we want to note that we are allowed, this facility is allowed to answer facilities such as multipurpose rooms or meeting rooms. Again, we did share this with the applicant. The only issue that they raised was in regards to parking and the density, and I can, I can open the floor up to any questions from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Questions? Yes, Mr. Edmonds.
I just have one question. In reading over all this, there's nothing, what is the, what is the minimum age of an occupant of this facility? Is there any kind of a minimum age requirement? Because couldn't children be there? Or teenagers, or what, you know? What stops that from happening in these?
I would, I would assume that would be a state issue where the state would take, they're not a full adult.
These are unlicensed facilities right now, from what I understand.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll let the applicant answer that one. I assume the state would control that in terms of what, you know, a warrant of the state or control the state where they place them.
Mr. Schultz?
I have a question for Ben. Number four says appropriate licenses with the state shall be maintained. If these are, in fact, non-licensed facilities, that means that as long as they're non-licensed, they meet the ordinance?
As long as they're non-licensed, they meet?
If the state does not require these facilities to be licensed, if they do not recognize them and license them, then item four is a moot point.
Well, I think two things. One is the applicant does have some sort of license from the state. I believe they had discussed that at the last meeting. And two, the applicant is working with the state to get a licensing program in place as well and standards for these facilities. So this covers us in case they do get that standard in place, instead of having to go back and amend the ordinance.
But my point is, if they are, in fact, not licensed by the state, then that has no teeth whatsoever.
Well, they, they have some sort of license with the state.
Mr. Shepke?
Maybe you could put in there when applicable. In other words, I've also contacted legislators and tried to see if there's any interest in the state having closer regulation on these facilities and, but right the way it's written down there, I think you're going to, I see what you're trying to do, cover yourself, but maybe applicable, appropriate license with the state of Michigan shall be maintained when applicable, or when, whenever they're, you know, they need to be.
We can, we'll add, we'll add language in there to clarify that.
I, I understand your point, Mr. Schultz. If there's no appropriate license by the state of Michigan?
Right.
Then there's no, there's no license that's required.
So they can go anywhere they want, or they, they meet this?
They would meet the requirement.
Right. Yes.
Yes, Mr. Edmonds?
Is there part of our definition of what adult is?
I was just looking at the definition. I didn't, I didn't see it refer to the, refer to adults.
I didn't recall that either.
I could be wrong. I could, I may have missed it, though. So is your question, could we include, make it so that it has to be adults?
Yes.
I think that's a good one.
I suppose if you felt, if the Planning Commission felt it was important to differentiate between adults and non-adults, I mean, would, would you feel that, would the impacts of a, of a facility of this kind specifically for adults be different than one that was for adults, for, for, for teens, for example?
I think that may be a question that the petitioner could give us some, some background on. Mr. Kempin, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question, just on part B there, that, just the wording of adult in the middle of that sentence, I think, may be in the wrong location.
I'm sorry?
Says recovery center, adult serving between, oh, is that the employee when you refer to adult there?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that, that's a, that's a, that's a typo. I should just say recovery center. No, adult should be removed.
All right, we're ready, Mr. Kemp. Yes.
One question. Mr. Carroll, do you know that the state specifically allows these in residential neighborhoods? Is there, you know, like the adult foster care?
No, I don't believe they, they don't. They don't. They don't regulate to that scrutiny.
They don't license them?
They don't license them to that scrutiny, yes.
Petitioner, like to come forward?
Hello, David Lord with Great Lakes Recovery Community.
Good evening.
Let me try to answer a few of the questions that came up. First of all, we are working with the state right now in an RFP format to write proper definition for sober living facility with the state and to engage them into a licensing policy. So again, we've got a draft proposal, RFP format, we're submitting them. We've already met with the state representative. Name escapes me right now. Right, right, all the way up to the top person, not, not dealing with, you know, lower levels, trying to climb our way up. Very well received. State recognizes the need for this type of facility and are very supportive, and again, have asked us to submit an RFP. So that's presently in process. We've got a draft, and we'll probably be going out to them within the next week to two-week window. As far as people and the ages, we only service adults, which is eighteen and, and over, so that may be a moot point. You can incorporate that into language if, if you'd like. We don't service teens. We don't think it would be a healthy environment, candidly, to have a teen in this, in this environment with adults. The ages that we serve are from eighteen all the way up to sixty-two years old. Okay, so with regard to some of the issues, I had written an email that was sent to Brent. I understand it was in the package, questioning a few things. One was a definition. We had maybe some more stringent language, if you will, than what was in your draft, possibly to have, give you, in essence, more control. Be it your description or our description, we're comfortable with either. I had, we had a comment relative regarding the open space environment, open space requirement being twenty-five hundred. We looked at the convalescent facility per your ordinance at two thousand. I don't, it, it would. Convalescent center was two, two thousand square feet per resident. If, if you feel more comfortable at twenty-five, that would be more than fine and adequate with us. And the last one was about the parking ratio. There is a large percentage of our resident base that do not have driver's license, but I just heard really kind of the rationale for the first time, because I didn't, when I read it, I didn't read the rationale or understand. Now I'm hearing it. Okay, that makes sense, you know, with, with visitors, what have you. So, and we, you know, with, with the land area that we have, we can accommodate. We'll have to do, and probably look to add additional parking surface. The land area is there to do it, so we can, we can satisfy that, so.
One, one point I want to make in regard to the parking requirement. There is a provision in the zoning ordinance that allows the Planning Commission to permit less parking, provide that the applicant can provide sufficient evidence that parking is, this much parking is not warranted. We wrote these regulations with both this applicant's mind as well as general regulations for any applicant. We felt that while this particular case, they might not have residents that have driver's license, there, there might be a case where we have a house that everyone has a driver's license. That's why we set, set it at one. If this applicant can come in and show us that seventy percent of their, their residents, only seventy-five percent have, have licenses, then they can present a case to the Planning Commission to reduce the parking requirement for this particular site. So I just want to make that, that point clarified to the Planning Commission as well as the applicant.
Thank you. Very reasonable.
Mr. Savinat?
Just to clarify, first of all, I appreciate Mr. Lord coming this evening. Well, it was the, the Sue's suggestion that we bounce this language off an actual operator to, to get a reality check, and the comments, I think, were very, were very helpful, and that's why I included him in the packet, because he clearly put a lot of thought into, into his review, and we do appreciate that. I just want to clarify one thing that you said. You said, um, open space calculation. I think what you meant was a density calculation.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just to, just for those watching at home or in the?
Yeah, point of clarification, correct. Density.
Mr. Carroll, I was looking at the memo, or the email, I guess it came from the petitioner, and I assume what was capitalized in the memo was your additions or comments to the definition that was crafted?
I didn't go so far as to create like a red line to show the changes that were made.
That was substantively. My understanding, yeah.
Yes.
Capitalized items were additions from, from yourself, I think.
Yeah, you know, I, sorry, I did that, and now I can't recall exactly what, if they were capitalized. I could have done it in a red line format, which would have popped out more.
Let me ask my question. Ben, did you feel that the comments that were made were either specific to this petitioner and didn't need to be incorporated in our definition, or can you give me some thought?
A little bit of both, and we wanted to ensure there was some flexibility for uses that might be similar but might be slightly different.
Okay.
And so I'll leave a little, I guess wiggle room is the best term to use.
Okay, thank you.
If there's, I will say, if there's something specific that the Planning Commission wants us to add, you know, Brent and I are more than willing to go back and look at our definition when we come up with the ordinance language for the public hearing.
But I guess what I would ask, Ms. Lancaster, have you seen this, this form or the definition that came back from the petitioner with the added comments?
Yes, I have.
Give me your thoughts as to, you obviously have seen our definition, assumed that what we've put out is the right definition to put out. You know, I look at some of these comments and just wonder about them, as far as defining it as not as a, oh, let's see. I've read something here. You know, requiring a higher level of care than outpatient services and things like that. Is it, is there a reason why we don't get into saying things like that? Is it not germane to the zoning ordinance?
No, I think his comments were really well-received by all of us. We haven't really had a discussion, the three of us, since they came in. Possibly, one of the reasons has been said is we wanted, we want to keep it as, based upon case law that we've read, we want to keep it as open for legal reasons as we can. But I don't think that we need to discard everything, he said. I think he made some good comments, so we'll probably review that again and see if there's some other additional things that we, we would, might want to change based upon. that we, we would, might want to change based upon, he had some good language in there.
Yeah, I guess I'd really look, look to you and, and Ben and Brent to look at that and just make sure that we're, we're good, but we're not going over the line or we're not even gaps, gaps in it.
Absolutely.
The only thing I'd like to, the only thing I'd add is, is there are, Ms. Lancaster made a good point, we will incorporate some of this, typically in a definition, you don't want to put regulations in the definition, and some of these items are more regulatory than definition purposes. So, we'll, if necessary, we'll move some of these into the, to the use provision requirements that I listed. But I think we'll go with something similar to these definitions.
Question for the petitioner, do you feel that what, if the state does take on some regulation of these facilities, they will be referred to as, as sober living facilities?
That's a term that's been, if you will, accepted in the industry. So, I, I can't, I would hate to project any possible change. You know, that's, again, is an industry standard that's been the, the term adopted. So, I understand your, the definition, just referring to it as a recovery center. Yeah, recovery center is, is a different.
Yeah, and I appreciate, Ben, your explanation as to why you did that, but I just want to make sure that we make the connection, that if it comes out as sober living and we don't have some connection in our ordinance at that point, so, that was my thought.
Mr. Chair, there's quite a bit of case law involving sober living facilities, and I will check those cases to see what, if there's a consistency that the courts have used to refer to them, but.
Okay.
That's a good point, we'll check that out.
Mr. Savin.
Could I ask Mr. Lord if, if he has a preference, sober living facility versus recovery center? Does it, does it matter, or do you?
I, I personally don't care, it doesn't matter, just so long as, again, from a consistency standpoint, there isn't any conflict or friction at some future point with the state and your interpretation. If, if it's broad enough and case law, personal standpoint, I, I'm comfortable with, with your definition so long as you understand what we're doing, because we wanted to make, provide a clear and vivid picture and description of what, who we are, what we do. So, I think hopefully we've successfully done that.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Kempin?
Yeah, I do have a few questions, specifically in terms of Section B here, where it says a site plan will be prepared in accordance with Article eight. I was wondering, in general, if that would require a new construction or if there are any facilities that could be considered in compliance with these requirements, and would they have to create a site plan for something already developed?
We, we would treat it like we would any other use, so if, if a special use was required, we do require a site plan, even if it's, because, to be fair to the planning commission and the residents in the, in the area, and, and just so we know what we're, the planning commission knows what's, what's being reviewed, and the residents and staff knows it's being reviewed and approved, we do, we would require a site plan, even if it was still a repurposing of an existing building, we'd still require a site plan. Now, we wouldn't require topo and, you know, a lot of the, the, kind of the ancillary information, but, but just so, so we've got, everyone's got all the information available, we would require a site plan drawing in that instance.
Very good, thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Edmonds?
I think my only concern is that we can, I think in any case, we should at least call it an adult recovery center. I think then my, all my concerns go away in terms of who occupies it.
Mr. Chair, that's one thing that I'm, I'm glad you brought up, we didn't think about it, and that is a good idea, and I think legally we can make it eighteen or older. That's generally the definition under probate laws, and that makes sense, and I believe it would be, stand constitutional muster too, so.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Schultz.
Could you tell me exactly, since you're working on something with the state, right now, what if any licenses, regulations, or oversight do you have from the state of Michigan?
Presently?
Present?
Present, we, we are licensed, it actually falls under a classification of a halfway house. And we, we, so we're, we're licensed, and then, but the facilities as a whole, for sober living facilities, are not licensed. We are, that's really the impetus of what we're trying to, you know, forge ahead and, and lead direction with the state in communication now. And again, it's been very well received. There are too many of these facilities throughout the state, within your own community, elsewhere, that, that without the regulation, with all good intent, they're not, they're not run well and monitored with certain standards. So, if by leading the charge and doing this, if we're successful as, as, again, has been very well received by the state, we will establish and set those standards. It's going to improve the industry as a whole dramatically, it's going to raise the bar. And that, that's, that's what we want. And, and by doing so, it's going to, if you will, clean out a lot of the riffraff. You know, when you have standards in place, you're not going to be trying to push, you know, four people into a room, you're not going to have people, you know, living quarters in a basement, just certain, you know, what would, we would accept as common sense, you know, things that just, again, go away, standard, minimum standards are set and, and abide by through licensing.
Mr. Edmonds?
Having just heard that explanation, I guess, I, I would appreciate a more rationale as to why similar facilities with six or less, there's no, we're comfortable with not having any kind of standards or anything like that, if they're doing the same function?
Again.
I, I'm not, so.
Well, let me direct that maybe to Ms. Lancaster.
Well, the problem becomes is that we, we have some federal laws that we have to comply with. We define six people as a family, so you can have six sober living people living there or six drug addicts living there. And the only way, we, we can't discriminate between those six people. We have to allow the police to take care of those six people that are drug addicts, et cetera, and we have to be very careful in making sure that we're not discriminating against certain people because they are calling themselves a recovery center. We've done a little research with that, and we, we just want to make sure that if we allow six people to live there and we don't allow six people who are sober living, we might run into some problems with that. So, we'll do a little bit more research on it, but initially my research was that you can't discriminate against these type of facilities.
Just to follow up, the only thing, what we're really encouraging people, anybody who wants to come into Troy and might do one of these, is to be sure that they move into a single-family residential neighborhood. I'm not sure that's what we would, that's the desired outcome. And they could live in, you know, in neighborhood streets.
That's a point well taken and something that we actually went about discussing. Looking at similar uses, there's no use of six or under that we regulate. So, adult daycare centers, we don't regulate until they get to be seven or above for, for a twenty-four-hour living environment. So, looking at case law, I, I think we felt a little less comfortable about regulating six or less than we did at seven or more. If that's the direction of the planning commission, I think Ms. Lancaster, Mr. Savin, and I can go back and look at, you know, putting in some sort of regulations for that, but we need to make sure it complies with excluding your zoning requirements and ADA and et cetera.
Then what is the state going to do in terms of residents of less than six, or six or less? Are they going to license them?
We're trying to get them, we're trying to get all licensed. If you're sober, anyone operating sober living facility.
Thank you.
And then, sorry.
Hang on, Mr. Grant. Just getting back to a zoning requirement, I noticed there's nothing in our requirements here that state how many can be located within a certain amount of area. In other words, can there be ten on a ten-home street? Do we separate them by a certain amount of distance apart? You know, those kind of regulations that we generally require in zoning. Is there any thought to that?
That's a, typically a slippery, slippery slope when you get into regulations like that, because you need to make a justification that there's some, some significant secondary impacts, such as an adult business, et cetera. And looking at case law, it's hard to prove that there is a significant secondary effect or delirious effect as, as a result of these facilities. And so you really, it's, it's a tough road to hoe moving forward with that kind of spacing regulations.
Maybe just a follow-up, do we have any right now in our ordinances that separate homes, let's say for adult foster care?
No, not to my knowledge, I think the only one, adult use businesses we do, I, I believe, but there's been significant zoning case laws that that's constitutional. Really, that's the only use that's really, you can, you can really prove to, to have any spacing requirements based on secondary impacts.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Savin.
You just, but Sue was talking about was, you know, a, a traditional family, where, you know, mother, father, children, versus a functional family. You know, and that's, the, the state and federal courts have kicked that around for quite a while, and it, this gets into constitutionality issues and whatnot. Just, I think Mr. Lord made a couple of comments, I think some people's hairs kind of stood on, on end. You know, if, if there was an operator that was jamming four or five people in a bedroom and then jamming people in the basement, that's going to exceed six people. It's, it's illegal, it, it's going to, it's, there's health and safety codes and building codes and all kinds of codes that are being violated, that are being violated there. You know, the, the, these uses are not regulated right now under ordinance. And we've, we've got an obligation, this, it's mandated by state law that you're, you're to provide for every, every type of use, provided there's a demonstrated need for that use and provided that the use is legal. We're not, we're not doing that right now. So that, that's kind of the, the overriding question. I, I understand the concern for those that are six and less, six people or less, you know, the, the functional family aspect. And, you know, that's what we're trying to do with, with these regulations, is to clearly, clearly define it so that we can, we can regulate it and we can, we can take enforcement action on, on these uses within, within the letter of the law that we can. And, you know, we're trying to, with definition and, and, and putting this thought into it, you know, the, the intent is to kind of control these, these uses, permit them, but, but control them at the same time within, within the parameters of law.
May I?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, thank you.
Just to follow up, most of us are familiar with the houses that the state do regulate. There's many of them, different medical conditions and different type of situations, including some mental health issues. And I was actually an attorney when all these laws were first passed by the state that allowed. There were spacing requirements in one of the first, that's how municipalities started dealing with it. There were many emotional hearings with the public about these houses. Some of you might have been around when the, they first came up with, the state came up with the laws regarding this. And people didn't want them in their neighborhoods, et cetera, they wanted spacing. Spacing is, was declared illegal by case law, so we are no longer allowed to space. I predict that if the recovery people are successful and the state learns to regulate this, the six-person housing will be taken out of our control altogether anyway, just like the other houses we are being, we've been advised about. That's not a bad thing, because they have more regulations and they do get licensed, and there's some things that make them different than just single-family homes. What I think we're aiming to do here, and we'll have to see what happens with the six-family homes, and we'll do some research on it for you, because there's nothing on the books for the state now. We just have our federal laws, Fair Housing and, and Americans with Disabilities Act. But we're interested more in those with more than six, because if they're, we want to be prepared, and chances are the state may not regulate those. So, we've thought this through quite a bit, your questions have all been really good, and we'll do some follow-up research to see if we can provide you with some additional answers.
And I think a point that Ben made earlier, we're talking about zoning ordinance, we're not talking about regulations. We can't cross that line to regulate, you know, what happens there, so, anyways. Mr. Chair? Mr. Schultz.
Brent, you just made a comment that the state requires that we have ordinance. So what's our current ordinance for a halfway house? Because we're, we're being talked to by an organization that is currently licensed by the state of Michigan as a halfway house. Do we have anything in our ordinance for halfway housing?
I don't believe we do.
My concern is, and I understand the need for this facility, but we're walking, marching down the road, changing our ordinance for one organization that says they're part of an industry. And I just find it interesting that there's no one else from the industry here telling us how important it is that we change our ordinance for this. It's, we have, we're suggesting that, you know, appropriate licenses from the state of Michigan shall be maintained, but we've already heard that there are no appropriate licenses from the state of Michigan. I just, I think we're putting the cart before the horse, it's just a personal opinion.
We did, we did meet with the planning commission a few weeks ago, and we talked about, you know, interpreting the ordinance and trying to see if, if it fit. And I think we kind of agreed it didn't fit. So, now we've got a, a, a potential use that is not, is not defined in the ordinance and not included in the ordinance. So, you know, we're, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place here by having a, you know, group that's interested in establishing a certain use in our ordinance, and we've already determined that we, it's not addressed. So, our, our options at this point would be to amend the ordinance to possibly permit it or to not, and then see what happens after that. We met with the planning commission at our last meeting, and, and the planning commission agreed in concept that this was a, a use that was important to consider for the community. And then, and we, we reacted to that meeting by putting together kind of a roughed-out outline of some provisions, and, and then our next step would be, would be, you know, putting actual, an actual public hearing draft together. So that's where we're at, and that was kind of the, the steps involved with getting to where we are today. You know, again, we, you know, there, there, there is a requirement that we provide for all types of uses in our zoning ordinance. And if, if there's a demonstrated need, and if the, and if the, if that use is a legal use. And Mr. Lord's, Mr. Lord, on behalf of his organization, is indicating to us that there is a demonstrated need, because there's, there's not enough of these in the region, and, and they feel, based on their background, that, that there's a need for this in our city. So that's kind of where, that's kind of the, some of the thinking that went behind where we, where we are this evening. I don't know if that answered your question or not.
I just, I think that the, the proposed language here, since there is no appropriate licensing by the state, which is item number four in this language, opens it up that anybody that wants to can say, I'm going to put in a recovery center and buy a building and come into the city. And it, it doesn't guarantee us that we're going to get legitimate operators, it just cares and guarantees us that we're going to get facilities called recovery centers, whether they're legitimate, properly run or not, because there's no, there's no state regulation. And that's my concern.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Lancaster.
I think if you look at the broad picture, and you understand that the Americans with Disabilities Act has defined people who are recovering drug addicts or alcoholics as handicapped. And you look at the ADA in the Fair Housing Act, if we don't provide living facilities for handicapped people, and a case can be made that we don't because of that reason alone, case law is extremely clear, and there are numerous cases that say that is intentional discrimination by a city, and you have to provide housing for handicapped people. That is the broad picture you're looking at, and we're trying to make sure. That is the broad picture you're looking at, and we're trying to make sure we're in compliance with federal law. And that's the best way I can state it. If we don't provide and there's a request and we don't have a legitimate reason for saying you can't have a facility, we're opening ourselves up for those kinds of accusations. So it's, you've got to look at the broad picture.
Thank you. Mr. Edmonds?
I thought Ms. Lancaster's explanation was very compelling, and I totally agree. However, going back to Mr. Schultz's comment, do we know for certain that there are no halfway houses in, they would be under the same type of, wouldn't they still be the ADA type situation? Do we know that there's no halfway houses in Troy?
I can't say that from my point of view. I know there are a lot of different adult foster care homes that we probably don't know about. We don't regulate them, the state has a listing of them. It's, I, there's no licensing at this point. I think it's a good idea that they're getting licensing, but that doesn't take it away from the fact that we have a federal government who's defined handicap for us. We have to deal with that, so here we are.
Anything else? So, Mr. Kempin?
I do have a question, not really under the purveillance of this commission here, but could the city provide some standards for operations in these homes?
Well, it's probably not under a zoning ordinance, possibly under a city licensing ordinance, and I don't know if that's ever been done in any other city. I know where it's, you know, hands-off for some of the other adult foster care kinds of things, and when you get into the fact of enforcement and if we have regulations, we're dealing with a lot of client-patient relations and getting documentations and things of that nature. I mean, we can look into it. I don't know exactly how we would enforce it. You know, we could probably look into a licensing kind of situation.
Yeah, I think it makes the most sense to have it at the state level, but in the absence, if we did see that there were issues, maybe there is something that we could do as a city, so, I don't know. I think in general this is a good idea.
All right, so staff will look at the language one more time and then bring it back to us. Thank you very much. Anything else?
No, I just, so, okay, we're back, reconvene in another two weeks then? Is that what I understand?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll put together, based on this, we'll kind of use what we have here as a foundation and put together some, kind of firm up the language, and then present it, and if the Planning Commission gives us an nod, we'll schedule a public hearing.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to something that was not on the agenda tonight? I guess not. So we'll bring it.
This is the was-on-the-agenda speak, I think.
What?
This is the was-on-the-agenda speak, public comment at this time.
People were.
It was not.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Schultz. So, does the commission have any closing thoughts or comments? Ms. Lancaster, would you like to start tonight?
None, thank you.
Mr. Savanna?
I've spoken way too much.
So, Mr. Kempin? No. Mr. Stratt? No. Mr. Schultz? Mr. Schecht?
I think there's a great need for these facilities. When I talked to some of the people when I was up in Lansing a couple of weeks ago, the biggest thing, the biggest concern that was expressed to me, they don't want to create a big bureaucracy, but I think there has to be some kind of regulations. There's going to be good operators and there's going to be bad operators. And when you have a chance, when you're put in neighborhoods with grievances with neighbors or with routiness or whatever, I think there has to be some kind of minimum standards and some kind of a regulation on it, but I think there's a great need for it. And I would, especially when we're in an area where industrial property, not industrial, but I'm, say, office or whatever, in other words, border property with residential areas, I think this is a great opportunity. You have recovering facilities for people that are ill. These are great opportunities for maybe some of these vacant buildings that we have that are still in a semi-residential setting for these to be converted to provide a real service for the community. So I'm really, Great Lakes seems, in all of the dealings I have with, I've heard them talk and gone out and visited their home in Sterling Heights, this is, seems to be a great operator. We just have to watch, and I think the state needs to step in, because you're not, not everybody's going to be a high caliber. We have to, we have to have some kind of accountability, especially when they're going in our neighborhoods, because we must protect them if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edmonds?
Just two real quick things to remind the Planning Commission of the free Planning Essentials workshop that's going to be out at Oakland County. I've attended at least three of these during my tenure on the Planning Commission, and you always do pick up new things that even some of you experienced Planning Commissioners could probably take, would benefit you. And secondly, I'd like to recognize Mr. Huaing tonight. My wife and I had a chance to attend the orchestra concert at Troy High, and Mr. Huaing, not only is he interested in planning issues, but he's also a very accomplished oboe player. In fact, the other thing, the Troy Orchestra has been invited to Lincoln Center this summer, and so it'll be a really great experience, so, thank you, Eric. Bravo.
Congratulations. Mr. Sanzeca?
No comment.
Mr. Carolisle, are you still with us? Nothing? Eric, anything?
I just had a comment about the Big Beaver thing. I think it's a good project, but I also think that, like, the rules in ordinances should take precedence in that if the commission works too much to work around them, then it might set up an unstable precedent for future projects.
Very well said. And with that, good evening, ladies and gentlemen.